Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we will call to order, please. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Counselors, could I ask you to sign in, please?
Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Okay. So first up, we have committee of the whole closed meeting.
Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Holland, that council resolve itself into the committee of the whole closed meeting to consider the following items: Labor Relations or Employee Negotiations, Kingston Professional Firefighters Association Local 498, negotiated settlement; and B, Labor Relations or Employee Negotiations, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 636,
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sago, ani, buju, wachea, kuekwe. As the mayor of the city of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who are entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So we were just meeting in committee of the whole closed meeting. We discussed a couple of items with respect to labor relations, one with respect to the Kingston Professional Firefighters Association and one with respect to the International Brotherhood of Electrical Works. So at this point, I will ask for a motion to waive the rules and have the clerk report, please.
Moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Hutchison, that council rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting and that the rules of bylaw number 2010-1 be waived in the city clerk report.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Shell, that council ratify the collective agreement and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement between the Corporation of the City of Kingston and the Kingston Professional Firefighters Association Local 498 for the period January 1, 2018 to December 31, 2019.
That carries.
Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Deputy Mayor Neal, that council ratify the collective agreement and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement between the Corporation of the City of Kingston and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 636 for the period January 1, 2018 to December 31, 2019.
And that carries. Okay. Next, we have the approval of the addits. We have an additional delegation, a report from the nominations advisory committee, and some communications. Can I have a mover for the addits, please? Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Ossanic. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Okay. Seeing none. We have no presentations this evening, but we do have a couple of delegations. First, Michelle Dubois, Executive Director, the Association Canadian-Française de l'Ontario, Conseil Regional des Mille-Illes, Acfumy, and Erica Lemon, Office Agent Acfumy, will appear before council, speak to clause six of report number 28 received from the CAO with respect to the Bonjour Welcome campaign. And just a note for all of our delegations that you have five minutes.
Bonjour, welcome. This is a campaign we are launching in Kingston. We are the French-Canadian Association of the Thousand Islands, the Acfumy, which is known by Acfumy, the acronym in Kingston. Our mission is to promote and ensure the integration, participation, and representation of the French-speaking community in the Thousand Island region, Kingston, and to ensure its continuity. We offer employment services, immigration services, and French-language speaking services. We are launching now today the Bonjour Welcome campaign with the AFO, the Assembly of the Francophone of Ontario. The organization represents the French-speaking community all throughout Ontario and advocates for linguistic rights for the francophone with the Ontario Parliament. So we are doing the Bonjour Welcome campaign in partnership with the AFO. And there's a website, bonjourwelcome.ca. I will let my community liaison agent, Erica, to explain what is the campaign about.
Thank you, Michelle. Yes, so I've been leading the campaign since I was hired at Acfumy in late December as the community liaison agent. And so we've been reaching out to a lot of different employers, so different employers and different organizations and businesses. And the first part of the campaign is to really ask for the francophone community to ask for those services that they need. And the second part of it is to ask businesses and organizations to show that they have those services or when they have them. Because we know that sometimes it's not possible for those people to have those services like 24/7. So that was a really big thing about the campaign. And at the very basis, the main mission that this campaign has is to just be welcoming. So really, it's very good for the tourists. Like, we spoke to Chris Wyman from the visitor center in Kingston, and he said that he has over 40% tourists that are francophone that come in in the summer. So we know that there's a need, not just in the community, but in the people who really come in and out of it. Yeah, so thank you so much for having us. We just came back from our launch right now. So it ended at 7:00 PM, so we got to walk right over and present. So thank you so much.
So we're just going to explain what we would like from the city council. We'd like you, the city council, to embark in the campaign and promote the Bonjour Welcome campaign and be able to offer French services in the city of Kingston whenever it's possible. So we would just like you to be able to put our logo and our promotional material to be welcoming the francophone community whenever they need French services, whenever it's possible. We don't want to demand it. We just want to say, why not do it when it's possible? There's a lot of people speaking French in Kingston. So if it's possible, why not offering the services in French? So we would just like the city council to support our campaign.
Yes. And should you wish to have any more information on it, please don't hesitate to contact us. Our coordinates are at the bottom.
So you all have our coordinates in the bottom, so you can reach us whenever you feel like.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Neal.
Yes. Sounds like a really good initiative. Have you had an opportunity to talk to Keys or Kingston Immigration Services groups? Because I know that they reach out and assist. And we have quite a few immigrants that are primarily francophones. So if you haven't yet, I strongly suggest reaching out to them.
They have not joined our campaign yet. We are launching it, so we will work to get more and more people. We have already 17 organizations and businesses that have joined as of today. But we really work with Keys and Kingston Immigration Partnership every day because we are an employment service and immigration service provider as well. So we know them, and we will try to get them on the campaign as well.
Excellent. Another organization, CAM, which is Kingston Association of Museums. And City Hall is one of the most popular museum sites during the summer. So, and I know that we, upon request, have people, guides that are bilingual. So that's definitely something you may want to look into as well.
We're taking note, and we will contact them.
Thank you.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Counselor Holland.
Thank you, Orsh. Thank you for the presentation. I'm just curious about the first component here in the greeting with the English and French, the Bonjour Welcome. Is that something that you're recommending to all businesses or only businesses and organizations or only those who actually provide French services at some point? Or is it meant to be more of a welcoming campaign, in a sense?
It really is a campaign. So the slogan, like, it's as simple as Bonjour Welcome, c'est tout ce simple que Bonjour Welcome. That's really the basis of the campaign. And you really, you take on the campaign however you can. So if the business can only say Bonjour Welcome, then that's perfect, you know? And it's just about displaying what you can offer.
So is that then mostly to do with signage? Or is it that staff would be greeting people with both salutations?
Yes, you can with both salutations. And we have a lexicon, so to help people just say a few words. So we have that in our promotional materials. So you can have a lexicon and just learn some greetings, learn some words. So you can give it to your staff also and see if they can just be welcoming whenever they have francophone clients in their business.
Yes. And one of the people that have embarked with businesses is Tango Nuevo. And the way that they did this was to just train their employees to say Bonjour Welcome. It's going to take some time to do it, right? Like, we don't expect it to happen every time, but this is about like little baby steps, you know? So that's the way that they're participating in the campaign.
And if a business would have bilingual staff just one day a week, it's okay to say we provide French services only Wednesdays. It's all right, you know? So just whenever you can, whenever it's possible.
Okay. See, no other questions? Merci beaucoup. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to our second delegation this evening. Liam Carey, Board Chair of the Kingston Theatre Alliance, will appear for council and speak to clause four of report number 28 received from the CAO with respect to municipal funding for the Kick and Push Festival through a service-level agreement with the Kingston Theatre Alliance.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. I just want to thank the mayor and council for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Kingston Theatre Alliance. I've had the pleasure of being with the Kingston Theatre Alliance since 2012. We recognize that the Kick and Push Festival came out of the wishes of the council to animate the grand theater. And I would say that we've met that objective with creativity, innovation, and ever greater success, both quantitatively and qualitatively. The number of experiences offered, the amount of artists engaged, and the payment employment opportunities for Kingstonians has doubled and tripled over our first three years. And now we're entering year four. This is a bit of a transformative moment for Kingston in terms of the rage and breadth of cultural programming that is offered. There are more artists working here and artists coming from elsewhere to work here than ever before. Many of the artists that were engaged last year are contacting us regularly to try to come back. Not only those that are local, also those who are now located elsewhere. They're excited to return to Kingston. And this elevation, this evolution, rather, will continue in our 2018 festival that we've got planned. I'm very happy to report that the storefront fringe is coming back to animate the downtown, to give emerging artists and youth opportunities to showcase their work. We're also increasing our main programming stream by two. And we're also, one thing we're really excited about is establishing a professionally-run marketing campaign to market the festival across the province. We're really excited about that. One thing that happened this week, and I'm not at liberty to say what's going on, but a major provincial body has just, will be announcing, we've got a major bunch of support to market the festival across the province and all the major markets. That's breaking later on this week, and we're static about that. So that's really, really exciting. The other thing I want to stress, because there is only five minutes, is that we're really proud of the festival in terms of the continuum of development that we'd offers. We have the camps for the children. We have paid opportunities for youth to make a living wage working in the art sector in Kingston, learning from professionals. We have the storefront fringe for emerging artists. And now we have an ever greater amount of professional opportunities for professional artists and emerging artists to perform and create in our city. And that's sort of the last thing I'd like to say. If council chooses to go through with what is being proposed, it's really going to help the Kingston Theatre Alliance, not only to promote the festival, but also to keep promoting Kingston as a place for innovation within the cultural sector, for the development of new work that can be exported elsewhere in the province. And we're incredibly excited about that. On a personal note, I came to Queens and I stayed in Kingston. I've been lucky enough to create work here that's been exported to other major markets in Canada and internationally, in one case. And I want to create other opportunities for people like me to work and grow and innovate in the city that we love so much. That couldn't be done without collaboration. Besides the city, I'd like to give a brief shout-out to our many, many wonderful organizational partners, the Great Waterway, the Kingston Accommodation Partners, Downtown Kingston, the BIA, the Dan School of Music and Drama. All these organizations and many more have come on board to help make us a success, and we're really, really grateful for them. It takes a great deal of collaboration, generosity, and vision to build something like this. And I want to thank council for your support thus far. I'm hoping it's something that you can renew. And just thank you for all that you've done. It takes a great deal of vision to grow something truly magical. And I feel like we're continuing to do so. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So we will move on. We have no further delegations, but we do have one briefing. Lanny Hurdle, Commissioner of Community Services, will provide introductory remarks and introduce Rob Kawamoto, Executive Director of Kingston Tourism, and Megan Naught, Executive Director of Kingston Accommodation Partners, who will brief council with respect to clause one, report number 29 from the CAO in relation to the municipal accommodation tax.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. I'm pleased to be here tonight to provide you with a brief overview of the proposed municipal accommodation tax, joined by Rob Kawamoto from Kingston, sorry, Tourism Kingston, and Megan Naught from Kingston Accommodations Partner, who will also say a few words in terms of the implication of this potential municipal accommodation tax. I have the exciting part of the presentation, which is to cover some of the legislation that I know you all want to hear about. So at a high level, in 2017, the province actually passed some legislation to provide municipalities with the authority and ability to implement a municipal accommodation tax. This particular tax, should council decide to move in that direction, is actually a mandatory tax. It's not a voluntary tax. It does apply to hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, as well as other accommodations such as Airbnb's. And municipalities have the option to decide whether or not they want to apply it to all of these different types of accommodations. It does not apply to institutions. So for example, Queens University and St. Lawrence College have residences. Those would not fall under this municipal accommodation tax. Those particular institutions could choose to continue to partner, as they have been, with the Kingston Accommodation Partners and leverage a voluntary fee on their rooms if they choose to do so. One very important point, I know there's, I think, a little bit of confusion in, I know I've heard some comments and questions in the community. The tax is actually applicable to the visitor and not to the actual business. So when the visitor books a hotel room, it would be a tax that would be applicable to that fee, the hotel room fee, and it's not paid by the actual hotel or motel itself. We have done some research in terms of other municipalities and how they're dealing with this particular tax. So far, when I actually worked on the report, we were aware of two municipalities in Ontario that had approved moving forward with the municipal accommodation tax. Those were Ottawa and Mississauga. And we know that London, Toronto, and Niagara Falls are currently considering moving in that direction as well. And all of them, one thing that was common across all of them is that they were all looking at 4% in terms of municipal accommodation tax. For municipalities that have had a destination marketing program in their community in the past, the legislation will require that, should that municipality implement a municipal accommodation tax, that the revenues from that tax be shared with the existing destination marketing program. In the case of Kingston, that's CAP, the Kingston Accommodation Partners. So a little bit of the Kingston context and how this municipal accommodation tax would apply in Kingston. So as most of you probably already know, the Kingston Accommodation Partners have been collecting a voluntary 3% hotel fee since about 2004. Not all hotels and motels are currently involved in this program, but a large number of them are already participating in this program. If council was to move ahead with a municipal accommodation tax, this 3% hotel fee would no longer exist on, obviously, hotels and motels because it would be replaced by the 4% municipal accommodation tax. The only area that CAP could continue to have a partnership would be the institutions, as I mentioned earlier, Queens and St. Lawrence, as well as some of the other businesses, like restaurants. To give council a little bit of an idea in terms of revenues that are being collected, in 2017, CAP collected about $1.7 million from the 3% voluntary fee. And it's important to note that with an increase to 4%, and if we were to add all the rooms that are currently not participating, so all the hotels and motels that are currently not participating, we estimate that we could leverage about $3.2 million in total revenue. I want to be clear that all of that money needs to be reinvested in tourism promotion or tourism development. It cannot be used to renovate roads, for example. So one of the key things is if the city was able to leverage $3.2 million, there would be $1.7 million of those dollars that would have to be redirected to CAP as per the legislation. CAP would, of course, utilize that for tourism promotion and development. And the city would have an agreement in place to enable that. What is left to be considered, so the reason why we're in front of you tonight is we're looking for some direction from council in terms of this particular municipal accommodation tax. We are proposing an endorsement in principle of the 4%. And what that will do is it will give us the direction to then work with our key stakeholders, like Tourism Kingston and CAP, to look at how do we then put together a redistribution model for those additional dollars that we would be able to leverage, which all have to be reinvested in tourism? Because right now, we don't have anything in place that really speaks to how collectively, as a community, we would utilize those funds. I know the staff report talks about there are different options. We could look at, obviously, increasing budget for tourism promotion. We could look at setting up a reserve fund that we could utilize when we're trying to attract major events to come to the city. So there are a number of things that we could contemplate doing. But what we want to make sure is that we work with our key stakeholders to put together a model and bring that back to council. We are also recommending that we consider accommodation, such as Airbnb, as a second phase to this potential municipal accommodation tax. And the reason for that is because they're a little bit more challenging in terms of being able to monitor. So we want to make sure that we have a robust process in place before we move forward to implement that. So I will leave it at that. That covers generally what's in your report from a staff perspective, and I'll pass it over to Rob and Megan to add some comments.
Great. Thank you, Megan. And Annie, Lanny, sorry. This is such a great opportunity for us. It's very rare that a province gives municipalities the ability to collect tax. And this is an opportunity that's come across our province or lasted a while, where we have an opportunity to grow tourism in Kingston specifically. Many other municipalities, like Lanny had mentioned, are looking at that tax, including Brockville. So we want to stay relevant. We want to stay in pace with what our other destinations are doing. And we want to make sure that Kingston is at the forefront and right there when we need to spend our dollars to promote our destination, like our competitors are. Also, we want to maintain the momentum that we've gained over the last few years with the visitkingston.ca brand. We've done a lot of hard work in the past from my arrival in July of last year, developing a great brand for our city and for our businesses, for visitors to come worldwide. We want to expand that. We want to grow it. In order to do that, with these additional dollars, we can apply those dollars to that promotion and product development that we're going to be talking about. So I think it's very important that we consider this. And like Lanny says in the report says, it's an endorsement for, in principle, talking about how we can work together. And I know, working with Megan over the last little while and CAP, the Kingston Accommodation Partners and Tourism Kingston, as two different organizations, we realize, and I think we all realize, that here's a great opportunity for us to collaborate, work with the city, work with our tourism partners, work with our destination stakeholders together to really take Kingston to the next level when it comes to destination marketing promotion. We've got a lot of things that are coming with the Breyer. There are going to be other events like that, I'm sure. These dollars can help bring those kinds of groups here. Cruise ships and deep-dock water situations and leboat, all the different businesses that are coming to the city. We want to make sure we have funding to be able to support those businesses so we can grow the economy and tourism and bring that visitor economy here. This is a great opportunity for us to do that. And I hope that we can move forward and start putting together this model that works for Kingston.
Okay. Yes, I'll say if you are. In addition, I guess, to Lanny and Rob's comments, what I'll say is that, yes, since 2016, we've built a brand that's unified. We've built a brand that you'll continue to see time and time again in different places and spaces. Imagery is flattery, or whatever that term is. And it's really interesting, even the Kingston sign that I was up here less than a year ago talking to you about. We've had several calls from other municipalities wanting to copy our sign, to which I say no. But essentially, you know, we've done some great partnerships with the city, Tourism Kingston and CAP. Another one is the Makers brand. Cultural Services has been an amazing partner to work with, and our makers and creators in the city have elevated our brand to the next level. Really interesting, the Ottawa tourism is now dipping their toe and essentially copying our brand. And so that's kind of flattery to us. But our pooled resources need to be bigger because our major markets, that you should realize we compete in, are very expensive media markets. So Toronto, Ottawa, Montreal are not cheap to buy media in. And these other municipalities, they're already in the 4% matte tax game. They're way ahead of us. Because their pool of fund resources to buy media and be in market is that much more. And so I'll leave you with that. And then if there's any questions, we'll tag team.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counselor Shroud.
Thank you, Orsh. And thank you for the... I was interested by the statistic from what Lanny, Commissioner Hurdle was saying about the $3.2 million potential tax amount at current levels. And I'm sort of reminded of something that actually Brent Toddren says about traffic, is that you don't plan for necessarily the traffic that you have in going in a place. You plan for what it could be with the right infrastructure. So the question is, with this in place, is that $3.2 million, 4%, $3.2 million is 4% of 80 million? So I'm taking that as the sort of estimated total hotel and motel revenues for a year that we're at right now. The question is, is that number potentially much higher if this kind of thing is successful?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it could be higher than $3.2 million, sorry. And one important point is, in that number of 3.2, we didn't include any of the Airbnb or other type of accommodations. Because those are, like I said, a little bit more challenging. So we looked specifically at hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts. But yes, it could be more than that.
That's great. An Airbnb, because that was my next question. So... So I understand from reading what's happening in other municipalities, it's difficult to herd the Airbnbs on board with something like this, but a mandatory tax is a mandatory tax. It would be an enforcement issue, but potentially then, what you're saying is that 3.2 million out of the 80 million business could be actually quite a bit bigger if Airbnbs were captured? And if the amount of accommodation needed to host all the visitors grew as well? So we could be looking at, at a budget that starts at 3.2 million but could potentially go much higher. I guess that's, I see you nodding, but if you want to add anything?
Through you, Mayor. That, that is correct, that Airbnbs are a little bit more challenging in terms of process to work with, and that's why we're, we're hoping that when we come back as a phase two, we have a much stronger process to be able to work through the Airbnbs.
Okay, next on my list is Counsel Neil.
Thank you for the presentation. At the Film Festival this weekend, I had an interesting chat with a woman who owns, she and her partner own a major hotel here, and there is clearly a desire, she had no issues with 4%. There is a desire that there be a level playing field, just like with Uber and the taxi industry. We shouldn't be allowing a competitor, a major competitor, to not have to give the same percentage. So, and I know that'll be a challenge, but I think you're, you're up to the challenge. So, and I understand that will be phased in? It won't happen immediately?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, tonight, the only thing we're asking for is endorsement in principle. The, the municipal accommodation tax is not going to start rolling out right away. We need to put together really the implementation plan, the details, and bring that back to council with a bylaw that would then make it effective. But yes, you're correct in terms of the, the other accommodations like Airbnb. We, I know we're working on a potential licensing program as well for Airbnb, so if there's a potential to connect the two together, we would like to do that. So I, we're trying to make sure that we're working collaboratively and, and we'll move those two processes at the same time.
Great. You anticipated my next question, but I do have one more. I'm just curious, the finances of it, and, and I know it's a work in progress, so there may not be a definitive answer to this question yet, but would this be something where there would be a service contract between CAP and the Tourism Kingston and the city, and the city might be the banker for these funds and then flow it to the organized, partner organizations? I'm just curious how, whether it would work like the BIA funding works.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing that I, I can say right now is that for the, the funds that we know that we would have to redirect to CAP under the legislation, we would have to have an agreement in place between the city and CAP. Anything above and beyond that, that's the part that we're asking council for direction to actually go away and work with the key stakeholders to figure out how that funding would be redistributed. And what we want to do at the end of the day is really maximize the dollars that we have to be reinvested in, in tourism promotion.
Great. Thank you very much.
Counsel Sinek.
Thank you, Your Worship. My question is, is like for the 763 hotels that haven't been paying the 3% voluntary tax, did they get a heads up at all that this was coming to council, or did they basically find out about it a few days ago when it hit the media and the council package was brought here?
So I, I can tell that a little bit. So each accommodation, no big, big, small, or otherwise, is tied into an industry council partnership. So our industry that we look to is called TIO, Tourism Industry of Ontario, and so they have been talking about this for a very long time. We on visitkingston.ca created a landing page about it, so it's an FAQ landing page that we send out to all tourism partners, not just CAP partners. So we have dipped our toe in the education piece of making sure all people, all sectors within Kingston know about it, accommodations and beyond. So we were proactive. Now, the next part is depending on your, your sort of answer and go forwards tonight, is to now do face-to-face consultations, yeah.
Thank you. Just one further, would that be one-on-one, or is that going to be a big meeting?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We, we haven't determined yet the format that, that we're going to use in terms of the conversation with those hotels, motels, and bed and breakfast, but we will have further discussion, and we want to make sure that they're also clear in terms of how the, the municipal accommodation tax works and that it's not necessarily a tax that's on to their business, but rather to the visitors.
Counsel McLaren.
Thank you. Whenever we increase taxes, we automatically reduce the demand for the, whatever's being taxed, but at the same time that we advertise, we raise the, the expectation that people will increase the demand. How confident are you that the increase from advertising is actually going to overcome the decrease from increasing the price of stay in Kingston?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. I think ultimately the goal is to be able to have a larger pool of money that is not being paid by the local taxpayers or the local businesses that we can utilize and reinvest in the tourism industry. So tourism promotion is one area that we can reinvest, but so is tourism development. And I think Rob spoke to product development. So product development could be things like deepwater dock. So those kinds of things that we will collectively have the ability to make those decisions as a community to reinvest those dollars that, again, are not going to be dollars being paid by our local taxpayers and our local businesses.
So it sounds like confidence is high?
Yes.
Yes. And just in case something happens, say, are you going to be monitoring this over the next 10 years? Because if everybody around us gets 4%, we might be better off if we have 3.5 or 3.34.
Through you. So we will be obviously monitoring and we will be reporting to council what we would most likely propose is a yearly report to council in terms of, obviously, how those dollars are being reassigned and reallocated. We will be monitoring surrounding communities and, and looking at what they're doing, as well as major tourism cities. So for example, Toronto and Ottawa, we know, attract a large number of tourists, so we will also be monitoring their success and how things are going.
Thank you.
Counsel Hodge.
I just want to cut something, being, taking in 3% over the numbers of years. So my first, my question is, did they take that money in themselves and was the city involved in that originally? I'm just asking with the mechanics here and who is responsible?
Yep.
And then I have a follow-up question.
Sure. So CAPS, a not-for-profit organization that's run by a board of governors with a specific set of bylaws. There's two people that work for the organization, myself and my colleague. And since 2004, yes, we've managed a tourism fund, and we've worked in association with the city, but we're a separate entity, completely financially responsible within our business.
You took in the money and you dispersed it accordingly in, well, I know it was with some partnership with the, with KEDCO. So my question is now, is the city going to be more involved? Are we, is the city going to be involved in actually collecting and managing this money now? And if so, is that a cost center?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, we've, and again, this is high-level conversations that we've had between the three partners, but what we are looking at, it would be that the city would be doing the collection of the municipal accommodation tax because it would be a mandatory tax. So it does change a little bit, obviously, the nature of, of the fee. And based on that, there's definitely a portion that we know needs to be redirected to CAP as per the legislation, and the additional funds, we haven't determined yet how those would be relocated, but that's where we're asking council tonight for direction to have further discussion with those key, key stakeholders so we can bring back that detail implementation plan.
So the, the question, I think the obvious question, next question is, will the city be reimbursed for its costs in doing that work for the tourism, the various small-T tourism partners that are involved?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we, we don't even know yet how much time and, and effort is going to be required to do this, and I'm looking at the city treasurer because I've had some initial conversations with her, but we haven't detailed out the, the time and effort that would be required for that. So the answer right now is, I don't know, and that's exactly what we would be reporting back on in the implementation plan.
Thank you.
Counsel Turner.
Through you, Mayor Patterson, the report, and I, I'm really excited about this, and I think this is a great addition to the city. Having this amount of money coming in as a revenue, I welcome this, and I look forward to this report going through very quickly. So my question is, time and place? So not to put any pressure on you, but the sooner the better. If we can get this money to generate money into our tourism or CAP program would be fabulous for the city and to keep our, our, our growth growing in tourism. So if you can answer that, that would be great, if you can answer that.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have an answer on that. I know that, obviously, we will need to have those conversations with the accommodations that have not been part in the past of the voluntary fund. We will want to make sure we reach out to them, and we also need to have some additional discussions with the stakeholders in terms of how do we set up the, or what, how do we redistribute the additional funds and who oversees them? And to Counsel Richardson's question, how does the internal processes work? So all of that needs to be detailed out. I don't have a timeframe, but we will work through, and ideally, we, I would like to see something, obviously, before the end of the year, come back to council with all those details.
You very much.
Counsel Shell.
Thank you. I'm equally moving forward. And just to sort of build on that, the bit that says that staff work with stakeholders to review reinvestment options, I think Megan could probably respond to this, that when CAP was formed, you probably had quite a group of people that had to come together to work out how you were going to spend the money. So I presume that that's what this is about. If we pass this and we do get a new tax, you'll have quite a new group of people that hadn't been part of CAP that will need to then be folded in, and is that part of the, the major process that you see will, will take the time?
Yep, yes, absolutely. We'll, we already have a really great composition, if you will, of, let's say, our CAP marketing program. So we have city staff, DBIA staff, in fact, they chair our marketing committee, cultural services staff, CAP partners and non-CAP partners, as in private business sort of operators that are around the table, as well as attraction operators. So that is just a snapshot of the kind of people that sit around and figure out the marketing opportunities for visitkingston.ca every single month. And so we'll just continue to work with that model, with all our attraction partners and accommodation partners, so that everyone's brought into the fold and everyone can work towards common goals every year with our business plan and our marketing plan and, and Tourism Kingston right by our side, if that's helpful.
Seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, so moving on, do we have any petitions to present this evening? Seeing none, we do have one motion of condolence, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Neil, that the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to Laurie Sargent, Administrative Assistant to the City Clerk, on the recent passing of her mother, Joan Sargent. Our thoughts are with Laurie and her family during this difficult time. So we will call the vote, please? And that carries. We have no deferred motions, so we will move on to reports. First up, we have report number 28 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor George, that report number 28 from the Chief Administrator of Officer Consent be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are, there are eight clauses. We will need to separate clause three to fill in the names. Are there any other separations, Counsel Neil? Okay, so right now, two and three. Counsel Holland?
Six, please.
Thank you. Okay, so first we will vote on the, the balance of the clauses. So clause one is amending agreement for the provision of a vote tabulation system, tabulators, and internet voting for the 2018 municipal election. Clause four, municipal funding for the Kick and Push Festival through a service-level agreement with the Kingston Theatre Alliance. Clause five, award of contract for standard print advertising rates. And clause eight, Ontario Municipal Commuter Cycling Program enabling bylaw and transfer payment agreement.
And that carries. Clause two, proposed amendments to bylaw number 2014-16, a bylaw to regulate election signs in the city of Kingston. Counsel Neil?
Yes, I'll make this very, I had an opportunity to talk to the, okay? There was some confusion in the last election with the idea that perhaps our sign restriction, restrictions applied to window signs as well, and there were some rebellious constituents who were putting signs in their windows, saying, "I dare you to tell me I can't put a sign in my window." And I just wanted to clarify with the clerk, as I think I read the, the amendment, that this will apply only to lawn signs. Is that accurate?
Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct. We are not regulating signs inside people's homes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ossenek.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to make sure, violate the sign bylaw. So one of the big changes, right, is that we can't put out signs now until 30 days till the elections, with elections October 22nd. Basically, no signs go up until Sunday, September 23rd. Is that the right interpretation?
Second, and yes, your.
Thank you.
Counsel Hutchinson.
I'll express a view, because I was going to ask about the window signs as well. And I cannot see the difference between a window sign supposedly exempted under private property showing out onto a public street and a lawn sign on private property showing out onto a public street. It seems to me they're serving the same purpose. So I don't know why we would allow that exemption. It doesn't, it doesn't make any sense to me in principle, and so I'm just wondering if there's more of an explanation than is found in the report that I saw, anyway.
Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It is tradition signs on the exterior of the property. We have done our canvassing with our other clerks of the municipalities. That is something that they are allowing as well. The signs within the property, the house itself, that's where we're not trespassing on, let's put it that way.
So I didn't quite catch that, that's where we are?
We are not regulating signage within the residence. We're not getting into the homes of people with respect to where the signs would be erected. Signs are permitted on the lawns, as there are in other municipalities as well. It's a longstanding tradition.
So as Clerk Holland just said to me, the question is whether it's a personal space or not, right? It's still advertising. Let's not kid ourselves, okay?
It's rhetorical, I'm assuming, Counsel?
The last bit was rhetorical.
Yeah. Counsel Ostroff.
Mayor, so just to be clear, lawn signs are not part of this, then? It's what's, it's the signage that's on the side of the roads and, and that kind of thing?
Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A reference in signage.
All elections, election signage, thank you. The part that I'm struggling with, and I really wish I had brought this up sooner, was, you know, within the urban area, I can see four days being enough, but I, I would have liked to have asked for a seven days to remain for the rural area because of the, the sheer size of it. Having just gone through it, it was, I mean, we were dedicated to it, but it would, it would be quite a task, four days. I mean, we were dedicated to it, but it would be quite a task, four days, for the rural area. I don't know if that's.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The response to that comment is that in order to maintain consistency throughout the community, it's important that we have a standard date within the bylaw. There are other municipalities that are more rural than we are, and they're down to two days to get the signs done after the election. So four seems to be a compromise that we believe will work. And it hasn't been a problem in Kingston. It's very rare that we have to go and charge anybody or take the signs down after the election.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, we will call the vote on clause two. And that carries. Clause three, service level agreement with the Kingston Arts Council and council participation in the 2018 City of Kingston Arts Fund. So we're looking for two counselors to participate in the juries for the review committees.
Could I?
Counselor Neal.
If I could point something out, these are exactly the same dates as the FCM conference. And at least two of us, and perhaps more, are going to FCM. And I dare say, we're people who frequently volunteer for these committees. So are we locked into those specific dates? I'm looking to our cultural director.
Mr. Wigginton.
Through you, your worship. These were the dates that were selected by the Kingston Arts Council. They've made a significant change this year to having these meetings during the week. You know, if it's desired, we could try and go back and work with them. But if I, it'd be ideal if we could make these dates work, as they've already been established.
Okay, so I think that what we will do is do a first try at this with the dates as proposed. Do I have a volunteer? Do I have two volunteers? Counselor Shell.
Yes, for the review or the project grants.
Okay.
The other one's my mother's birthday.
Yes. So I need one counselor for the review committee for grants and one counselor for the project grants. So Counselor Shell, you are volunteering to be the counselor for the project grants review committee. Can I have another volunteer for the operating grants review? Counselor Hutchinson?
But when in the day is this going to be done?
Mr. Wigginton.
Through you, your worship. Kingston Arts Council has scheduled these meetings to take place between 9:30 and 12:30 PM.
I'm just.
Good. Okay. So unless there's anybody else that is itching to volunteer, we will confirm Counselor Hutchinson on the operating grants review committee and Counselor Shell on the project grants review committee. Okay, so with that, we will call the vote then on clause three. And that carries. Clause six, bonjour, welcome campaign. Counselor Holland.
I'm very excited to see this proposal and to hopefully have the endorsement of all of council. I guess just to give my rationale, we did hear from the delegation that it's important for tourism, and I think we can all see that. But having grown up in New Brunswick, which is a bilingual province, officially bilingual, language was very political. There was a lot of segregation between French and English. And I think this is something that is good for society as well. The benefit to having some sort of cultural awareness and recognition of our Francophone community, as well as our visitors, is very important. So I'm very thrilled to see this come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Stroud.
I'll just say, évidemment, I will support this. But I do have a question for, for the commissioner. It is about the, you know, during the delegation, we heard what this would look like. So if City Kingston staff were looking at participating in this, just have we taken a preliminary look at what kind of services we could provide? Because I understand we're quite unilingual in the services that we provide right now. And I'm wondering what we have that we can draw, what resources we have we can draw on and what it would look like in, a couple of examples would be nice. Thank you.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Yes, we have taken a very high level look at what we actually currently already provide in French, or we have a mandate to provide in French. So all of our social services, childcare, as well as housing services, we do have to provide in both languages. So that's definitely an area that we know is already available. We're not necessarily probably making it as, we're not advertising it as much as we should, and this will help to do that. We know City Hall, we have tour guides that are also bilingual. So I think there was a comment earlier about City Hall, so that's something that we would identify. The campaign refers as well to staff that are bilingual, wearing some kind of pin that indicates they speak both languages. We have a number of staff that are bilingual, but it's not certainly obvious. So that's something else that we could also implement quite easily without having to really change anything that we're currently doing.
Thank you. Yes. And you need, I guess, what happened at the hospital where I worked when a bilingual policy was brought in, was that they surveyed every employee and had everyone volunteer the information of what other languages they spoke, especially French. Excuse me. So I guess we would have to do that, because you can't always tell from someone's name whether they speak French, that's for sure. So I guess the question is, would we be doing a survey across the thousands of Kingston employees to identify those that can provide bilingual services?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the initial steps would be to, like I indicated, those services that we already provide or have available in both languages, we would make sure there's signage that's available, so it's very obvious to the general public that they're available in both languages. We would reach out to staff and departments, especially the ones that are dealing with the public. So the front-facing, basically, service providers, we would reach out to identify employees that do speak both languages. And we would make sure that based on that, there's appropriate recognition or information that's provided to the public.
Thank you. And I plan to.
Thank you, Mayor Bohm.
It's just Counselor Bohm now.
Counselor Bohm. Okay, my mistake. Deputy Mayor Neal. Counselor Bohm.
Extended my term, did you? No. Thank you, your worship. And through you, I'm obviously going to support this. I think this is a great initiative. My wife is a Francophone, and to speak to Counselor Stroud's comment, you cannot always tell who is, because one time on the phone, she asked me, do you know any French? And I roll into my French immersion, and she rolls into perfect Quebecois. And I'm sitting there going, wow, you win. So we're raising our children bilingual. I think it's amazing. The biggest plus I see with this is actually the little pin that just says je parle français. And that's huge, because sometimes you're just walking through the hall, and two people just kind of see that. And it's like that instant recognition. And there's like this whole culture that exists, but it's almost like hidden. And I think to some of the other comments around here, like, let's bring that into the community. So let's kind of celebrate that and also encourage other people to, half my problem is, is just the confidence to actually try to speak French with somebody. And I probably know a little bit more than I think I do, but at the same time, it's just having that confidence. So encouraging the conversation and basically, you know, bonjour, welcome. It's great. It rolls off the tongue. So I think this is awesome.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we will call the vote on clause six. And that carries. Clause seven, a word of contract tree planting contractor. Counselor Stroud.
Yes. First of all, Counselor Ossanik actually started the ball rolling on some of these questions. And she wrote a detailed email to Public Works staff, to Director Wells, and he answered them. He was very thorough. He gave many answers to her questions by email. There's so many questions and so many answers, it wouldn't actually be practical to go through all of them here tonight. But I wanted to just mention one or two, just read out what, I don't see him here tonight. So I'm just going to read out what the answer was given. And then I have a question for staff. Hopefully, someone here will be able to answer that. So for example, the obvious question that she asked was whether the contract that's in the RFP includes the cost of the trees themselves, or is it just the cost for planting? That's the very first question any landscaper would ask as well. And the answer was, no, it was just for the planting. The cost of the trees is a separate RFP, which provides us more control, was the explanation. So, okay, so that's one of the questions and answers. And then another one that I thought was noteworthy was, how many trees are being planted in the spring? So from Counselor Ossanik, are 500 trees being planted in the spring? And of course, that question is motivated by the, the obvious reason is because when you plant in the spring before the summer, and they're young trees, they dry out in the summer, and many of them don't survive, as Counselor Ossanik has brought up many times in the past about Bath Road and places like that, where young trees were not, did not survive the first summer. So anyway, the answer was 500 trees in the spring, and all, they will all be planted by Drake, by the contractor. So, but the bigger picture, I guess, was 1,000 trees, 500 of which get planted in the spring. And the reason for that is because you don't have time to plant 1,000 all in the fall. So then my last question came from a member of the community, who also happens to be a landscaper, and who did not notice the RFP when it came out. But he took a look at it when this came up. And he says that he read through the reporting on the city website that said that there were 18 people that took, for different firms, landscaping firms and so on, that took the RFP paperwork. But only, we only see one application, and it's from Drake, who is the successful applicant being recommended by staff. And so that's my question. Why, do we know why we only have one response if 18 firms took the paperwork? Do you have any idea?
Ms. Kidd.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, all city RFPs are posted on a bid site, and they're available. We can see how many times any particular RFP is downloaded. We can see who downloaded it, but we have no information available to us as to why someone downloaded it and then chose not to submit a response. And that's, that's with all RFPs that are issued.
Okay. So I guess for us, we have to decide. And the obvious question is, do we go with the one applicant at the price that they've bid? Or do we think that we need a competitive process? That's the obvious question when you get an RFP with only one bidder. Now, we do have something to compare it to. We can compare it to last year's work. Scope, size is similar. They did complete last year's work successfully. There is a watering component included, which was another question from Counselor Ossanik that was conferred by Director Wells. Drake, Drake's are required to water the newly planted trees as specified in the planting contract. So it's contracted. It's part of the contract. So, and that's especially important for the spring planting. So the question is, is there another company out there that might be able to do a better job, or a cheaper job, or beat this RFP had they applied? But we know that 18 took the paperwork. So I'm left with the advice of my friend who's a landscaper, guessing that perhaps it's tough to come in at this number and still do it successfully with the size of, and to have the manpower available to do this size contract. And maybe these landscapers have a lot of things going on, and they can't free up enough manpower. But that's just a guess. And really, ideally, we would want a competition in the future. It's not healthy to have just one supplier with no competition. So I'm tempted to move deferral, but I'm not going to. And I'd like to see if anyone else has anything to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Counselor Ossanik?
Thank you, your worship. That is a concern. This contract also, or this, what we're going to approve tonight, it also gives the option of extending their contract into 2019. So for whoever's around the horseshoe in 2020, when this contract comes up again, then maybe we can ask, I don't know, if this right now is February, if February, March, maybe we should be asking in September for the 2020 contract. You know, what parts of the RFP, or what parts are going to be in that RFP. The good part about what I heard from our director of Public Works is that they really have a good tree watering plan. After Drake does the initial watering in the spring, then our Public Works staff take over the watering for the rest of the time. And that's something that's really important. So I will approve this tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, your worship. I thank the, Counselor Stroud for bringing this up, and also the comments of Counselor Ossanik. I note that Drake's got a total score of 88. I would think it would be very difficult to do that unless the price was a price that staff thought was reasonable, based on experience. Would that be a reasonable summand?
Ms. Kidd.
Through you, Mr. Messon. As the report indicates, the price that was submitted by Drake was within the expected price range that was budgeted for the program. So I understand that the price is reasonable in accordance with the work that was, that's expected to be done.
Thank you. And I understood it'd be 500 in the spring and another 500 in the fall? Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, 500 in the spring and more like 1,000 in the fall, for a total of 1,500. The 500 in the spring are the amount that the Public Works Department felt that they could comfortably manage, not knowing what the summer weather conditions were going to be, if we had a drought like we had in 2016, and a comfort level that they could manage the watering program and the monitoring program, because fall is definitely the ideal time to do the planting. So there will actually be in excess of 1,500 trees planted. This will cover the Emerald Ash Borer replacement program, some of our normal replacement trees, and then the contribution to the double the tree canopy program target for this year.
Thank you. Perhaps that goes somewhat, answering the question about whether it's a worthwhile bid. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the. And that carries. Okay, moving on to report number 29 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Hutchinson, that report number 29 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted.
Okay, so there's just the one clause, municipal tax accommodation. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Report number 30 from Planning Committee.
Pleasure. Report number 30 from the Planning Committee duly moved and seconded.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Neal, seconded by Counselor Turner, that report number 30 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, there are three clauses. If no one like any of them separated, we'll vote on them as a whole. Clause one is approval and application for an official plan and zoning bylaw amendment, 1201 McAdoo's Lane. Clause two, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment, 810 Middle Road. And clause three, approval of an application for an official plan and zoning bylaw amendment, 133 Dalton Avenue. So we will call the vote. And that carries. Report number 31 from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee.
I had lost terribly. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Holland. Thank you.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Neal, seconded by Counselor Holland, that report number 31 from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
So there's just the one clause, appointment of members to the Built Environment Working Group. We'll call the vote. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Okay, report number 32 from the Nominations Advisory Committee.
Thank you, your worship. Please present report number 32 from Nominations Committee. Moved by myself, Councillor Hutchinson, seconded by Councillor Osterhoff.
By Councillor Hutchinson, seconded by Councillor Osterhoff, that report number 32 from the Nominations Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, there's just the one clause, that E. Jane McFarlane and Haley Smith be appointed to Herd Kingston for a term ending November 30th, 2018. So, we will call the vote. And that carries. Okay, we have nothing from Committee of the Whole. We have no information reports. We have no information reports from members of council. We have one item of miscellaneous business, that the resignation of Donald Mitchell from the Built Environment Working Group of the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee be received with regret. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Councillor Shell, seconded by Councillor Bohm. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, we have one new motion. It is a motion of reconsideration, moved by Councillor McLaren, seconded by Councillor Hutchinson, that we reconsider the motion to defer the recommendation with respect to municipal discounts. So, the rules of a recommendation, or a motion of reconsideration are as follows. Both the mover and seconder have an opportunity to make a clear and concise statement to council as to why they wish to have the motion reconsidered. Just to note that this is to reconsider the motion to defer, so I would ask both the mover and the seconder to please keep your comments related to that motion to defer rather than the motion itself. So, Councillor McLaren, you have the floor.
Thank you. The deferral seemed, that there doesn't seem to be a good reason for it to be deferred at this time, and here's why. The report on page 6 states that the, and this is a quote, "That the LICO is so low that it disqualifies a large group of residents living in poverty. I believe this creates an imperative to help the people now, as opposed to later. If we really want a livable city, and if we want to find, and if we find that Kingston is not a livable city for some, then this is the time to move on this, not a year and a half from now." So, that's why I want to vote in favor of that today. The second reason that I see no good reason to delay this is that the seniors discount shouldn't be linked to a poverty reduction. Taking away the seniors discount is a form of ageism. It's universally true that no matter what their situation in life, everyone makes less money the day after they retire than the day before. So, retirement is a financial hit, and it's getting, don't worry.
So, again, this is to the motion to defer, not to speaking to municipal discounts, whether or not you agree with it or not?
The point is that it's forcing ageism on us, and instead of delaying it till next year, we are committing it now, or, sorry, the reverse of that. We're committing it later as opposed to fixing it now. That's why it's a time thing, that's the point I'm trying to make. May I finish? Thank you. So, it's universally true that everybody, it's a financial hit for all retirees, and this puts them into a class that allows increasing discrimination. Ageism is like racism and sexism. Despite it being illegal, there are still a whole host of subtle and not-so-subtle aggressions, maneuvers, pressures, and discrimination suffered. And just like combating racism and sexism may require positive action, so too does the fight against ageism. Taking away age-based benefits, as long as these pressures to retire are still there, means that we are acting as oppressors.
Councillor Turner, so a clear and concise statement really should be in and about a minute. You just quickly say why you want this back on the floor. I, you're going into the actual arguments of whether or not we want to go down this route, and we're not at that stage. So, do you have anything else that you wish to add that speaks only to why you would want to reconsider the motion to defer?
Just a conclusion.
Very briefly, please.
So, for these reasons, I want to vote down the recommendation to take away the seniors discount today, today as opposed to in the future, and there's no need to hold this over seniors' heads for the next year and a half.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councillor Hutchinson, you're the seconder. Do you have anything to add?
Just briefly, I think that on, I voted for this originally. I think on further thought, responding expressed concerns of seniors and those who favor the higher limb, that this is a question of principle. The deferral asks about details or quantities. I think it's clear from the report, if you read it carefully, that the quantities are clear enough. There would be disqualified approximately around 15,000 seniors, and I don't think that's acceptable. And the limb would increase the number of people that are covered, and I think both would be fair and equitable, and doable, affordable. So, the only way we can get to that question is by reconsidering this motion.
Okay. So, the motion to reconsider is on the floor. We will vote. It takes two-thirds to pass. So, we will call the question, please. Please vote. And that loses by a vote of four to eight. Okay, are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clark Ross for minutes, please.
Moved by Councillor George, seconded by Councillor Stroud, that the minutes of City Council meeting number 2018-8 held Tuesday, February 20th, 2018 be confirmed.
Please vote.
One more, please.
And that carries. We have some tabling of documents, a number of communications. Is there any other business? Mr. Clark Ross for bylaws, please.
Moved by Councillor O'Sannick, seconded by Councillor Turner, that bylaws 1 through 10 and 14 be given their first and second reading.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by Councillor O'Sannick, seconded by Councillor Turner, that Clause 11.34 of bylaw number 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw 2, 3 readings.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by Councillor O'Sannick, seconded by Councillor Turner, that bylaws 2 through 14 be given their third reading.
Please vote. And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Councillor George, seconded by Deputy Mayor Neil. Please vote. And that carries. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.